Okay. Am I okay down here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, alright, so we'll call this meeting to order ordinance.
It's so far, it's so far away.
I know, it's so far away. Ordinance sub, you guys got all your technology over there, it's not.
No.
Uh, call to order, January twenty seventh, ordinance subcommittee meeting six P M I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so. More stuff. So I was thinking that for this meeting, we could uh, take a look at what we have on our agenda and prioritize a little bit and then um. Sign some tasks, I know that uh, one of the things that we've had on our agenda for a little while is the sign. And it'd be good to start looking at that maybe since we don't really have a lot of other things on the agenda, we could, cause that, you know, there's a lot of. A lot of stuff in there that needs work, did you take a look at it?
Yeah, I was just saying to J P, I wonder how we're gonna approach this, this is a lot.
I think, I mean, I have, I think, I think I have an idea, so um. You know, basically, the two things we have on our agenda are the sign ordinance and the, the food truck, now, the food truck thing, I think we're still in research phase.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and I did talk to um, uh, Mrs. Duda about the food truck ordinance. You know, as it stands right now, they just have to, it's, it's not very cumbersome for food trucks to come into East Hampton.
Okay.
Um, the process is relatively simple, um, it's not, it's not super costly, which I was just worried that people were gonna have to come in and they were gonna have to get multiple permits and. Um, so, you know, if, if, at the end of that, we feel like there's nothing really that we can do to make it easier for food trucks to come into East Hampton, I don't necessarily know that we need to further. Legislate food trucks.
Don't wanna restrict them.
We don't wanna really restrict them, um, you know, I think the only thing that could kinda come out of that, which could be interesting, which is. Uh, Melissa's brother has a food truck in Boston.
Mm-hmm.
And one of the things that is really helpful, like she was telling me, one of the things that's very helpful for them is having a commissary. So allowing, and I don't know if we would need to do this by ordinance, or if we could, or if it was just something that could happen, but um, you know, having something within the zoning that allows. A community kitchen to be used by food trucks to do their food prep.
That's right, I couldn't remember what that.
Yeah, so it's like, it's like a, it's like a kitchen that is used by multiple food trucks where they prepare all their food. And then they go out on their truck and dis- disperse it.
I guess my question, if we had something like that, would it be a fee per time, like, well, why would someone with a food truck with kitchen access within the truck? And I'm basing this totally on like food truck shows.
Mm-hmm.
Why would they want to do it inside a different building rather than just utilizing the space that they already have?
Well, I think, I think the, the whole, the point of the, having a commissary is having um, large space to allow you to. Do the major prep that you would need to do before you go into the truck and, and have refrigerate, refrigeration space, so you could do um. You know, less major prep in, like if you had to smoke meats or something, that's hard to do in a truck, so it might be a place where. Um, you know, they do their big major food prep and then um, they do the, the smaller put together stuff in the truck.
Would you consider having a survey for food truck owners or people who are considering food truck in western Massachusetts, if that's something they're even seeking?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, well, I know that every food truck needs, it's by law, they have to have a kitchen they're attached to.
Uh-huh, okay.
It's a, it's a mandatory requirement. Whether there's any legislation we can pass to allow, I don't know if, I don't think we have that as a piece in our zoning, I don't think we have like a. Community, like a commissary kitchen.
Mm-hmm.
And then we have restaurant, we have, so, I mean, and, and I don't know if it's necessarily needed because there's a bunch of churches in town that have. Community kitchens.
Community kitchens.
Which could be used if they were approached, you know, cause they're probably underutilized, but that, I mean, that's, so for the food truck thing, that's kind of the, the, where. Where we kinda left off.
Okay.
Um, but uh.
What do they do now?
So, for example.
Where do they go?
Mission Cantina has a food truck that they will bring to East Hampton, and it's based out of their restaurant in Amherst.
Mm-hmm.
So they do a lot of the prep work in Amherst, and then they load up the truck, and then they go onsite, and then they prepare the food onsite, so. Um, and as far as the other ones, I, I think there's another like fresh food truck, I can't remember what it's called, like Farm Fresh Food. Um, and I'm not sure where they're based out of.
Mm-hmm, you know, the community, the, I, I frankly haven't seen a lot of food trucks, so I'm not all that familiar with the concept.
Right.
Uh, I must say, I, I'm thinking like, you know, okay, sprint, but I'm thinking of business opportunities, so my mind's spinning.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're talking and I'm going, okay, could East Hampton become a hub?
It could be.
For, for something grander than just the East Hampton area, but like, could you kinda set it up where people, I mean, if there really are places that go to Hoyoke and Springfield.
Mm-hmm.
Westfield, Northampton, well, come to East Hampton and you could work in, in this section, we could have a.
Yeah, and that's um.
I don't know.
One of the things that's happening.
Lots of food workers there prepping for you and here and there.
Yeah, yeah, one, one thing's happening with the mills, so if, at the, in the back of the mills where they just put in all the parking.
Uh-huh.
Um, the two breweries are pulling in food trucks, uh, in the, in the summer, it was like on a weekly occurrence, where there'd be food, and so. Once people start figuring that out, there's gonna be more food trucks coming to East Hampton, because when you have that many people drawn to the breweries with this huge open parking lot, brand new now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and all these people, it's right on the bike path, there's the park right there, so on Thursday nights, when there's performances, Friday nights, when there's bands, Saturday nights, when they show movies. You know, I have, I have a feeling that area is probably gonna be like the central food hub, food truck hub of East Hampton.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, I don't know what we can do to encourage that, or to help that, but I think that would be, because food trucks are becoming more of a um. Kind of a niche thing, like Boston has hundreds of food trucks.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they also have twenty page ordinance.
Okay, so right now in East Hampton, I know of at least two that I, that seem to be more permanent.
Mm-hmm.
One is that trailer that's sitting up on the edge over where the circle is.
Yeah, 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 the sausage place or whatever.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, 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 kibbasa.
Consider a food truck?
I think that's a food stand.
Okay.
So I think that that, it's a good question, what is that covered under?
And the next, the next one that I can think of is that when Demented Effects was open, there was.
Like a popcorn thing.
And it was permanently there for the season, so would that be considered a food truck?
That would be a food truck, yeah.
Okay.
So, let, let's find out about, can we, cause what we need to do is we need to ask um, Ms. Duda about that.
Mm-hmm.
Because, um, let's see, food truck. At, was she, I wonder if she's still here, did she leave?
She really left, cause I know they are here, I just took six on Wednesdays.
Right, food truck at the circle.
No, I'm checking, maybe she can, or maybe she could come to our next meeting.
Yeah, I can, I can send her an email.
Mm-hmm.
Even though I got in an argument with her last time I was talking to her, about cigarette advertising.
Oh, really?
I was just like, I feel like, you know, big billboards outside of businesses, advertising cigarettes are, uh, like not very. Oriented towards the hea- the health of the community, she disagreed with me.
Okay.
But is that her?
There she goes.
Hey, would you be, um, would you just like to come to our meeting, the next meeting we have, to talk about the food truck ordinance?
Sure, when is the next meeting?
Uh, well, we haven't set a date yet for it, but we, we were just wondering, maybe you can answer it just really quickly, um, the, the little food stand that's set up on Kalaski Circle. Um, is that considered a food truck, does it have to get the same permits?
The social meeting?
Yes.
We are in a social meeting.
Yes.
Okay, um, the um.
You can go home, we didn't have to drag you to a meeting that you didn't know about.
These are, we just had two questions, we weren't quite sure.
Alright, so, the, the woman operating that um, mobile vendor operation.
Mobile vendor, so it's under the mobile vendor ordinance, kind of?
Well, not really.
Okay.
She's kinda grandfathered, when I got here, she was operating, she doesn't meet all of the criteria for a mobile vendor, but since she was in place, I didn't challenge that when I came here. And uh, she, she does pretty well on her inspections, and I've never had a complaint.
Okay.
So it, noth- nothing has ever pushed the envelope for me on that.
When you say since she's been in place, do you mean that it's in a stationary place, or that she was already established?
She was already established, uh, some, many years, I guess, prior to me getting here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I guess she's kind of grandfathered and varianced, but she, she isn't operating out of a, a permanent kitchen. Which, if you're a mobile vendor, by definition, you're required to have a place that, where you store your food, where you go back at the end of the day and. Sanitize and wash your dishes and your, your facility, um, and so forth and so on, so, uh, she doesn't meet all the qualifications of a mobile vendor.
Kind of in between somewhere.
We just, we permit her as a food establishment because that's how it used to be.
Okay.
Um, if however, she ceased operation and, and somebody else come along and wanted to do the same thing, I'd say no.
Right.
Unless they met all the criteria of a mobile vendor, a mobile vendor usually is a seasonal vendor also, and she seems to operate year round, which is a puzzling thing.
Yeah, cause it's cold now, well, it's not really.
Although I, I don't see, I mean, I see that she does close down every year, and it's a little unclear to me for how long, now, all of that having been said, something uh, happened this year. The fire department saw that she had a sign out on the lawn there that said french fries, and that caught his attention, um, Captain Wayne Heneman. Because she has to have a full compliant ancil system, fire suppression system, if she's frying foods. So he wrote her a letter and said, you have to have this thing, call me, and I wanna see what your plan is for remediating this by a certain date in February, I think. And this was back in October or November, so simultaneous with that, when we issued her permit to operate a food establishment, we issued it only for two months. And we said, renewal of this is continued upon you meeting the fire department requirements, because we can't permit you to serve food. If the fire department is not allowing you to operate, so, and I said, call me, we've never heard from her, which is very interesting, now, she's not completely conversant. In English writing, but she has a son who perfectly is, and in fact, when I was on a food inspection once, because I asked her some questions that. Kind of befuddled her a little, she got her son right on the foot, on the phone. And I talked with him, and I was very satisfied that between the two of them, that they were, they got everything done they were supposed to get done, it was just a communication problem. So, um, I think this is just a communication problem, but why she hasn't responded to his letter, or to mine, that I enclosed with the permit, is a puzzle.
That's interesting.
So it's funny you mention it, cause just this week, I was thinking of her, and thinking, she's closed up now, is she gonna reopen, is she not gonna reopen, is she gonna call me? I, I'm gonna have to poke her pretty soon, you know, give her a poke, you know, a call or a letter or something and say, what's going on, cause I, I don't particularly want her to be closed down. We just wanted to make sure that she's in compliance with what she needs to be in compliance with.
Great.
For the food part, she's good, cause she's grandfathered, uh, for the fire part, she's not good.
Okay, and the other, the other one we were wondering about was the one that was out in front of the button building, um.
During the Halloween thing?
During the Halloween thing.
Um, which one was that?
It was like, it looked, well, I think it was like pop, it was like a pop, it looked like a carnival.
Yeah, that guy.
Thing.
That wasn't this year though, that was last year.
It was this year too, yeah.
It was this year too?
Yeah, so, um, if they were gonna get, would they probably do a mobile vendor as well, right?
Yeah, I, I remember that, I wasn't here at the time, I think Dennis Lacourse inspected that for me, that's why I don't remember that, he, he, I do remember inspecting him last year as well.
Right.
Um, so, he's a perfect example of a mobile vendor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's in a mobile vehicle, self-contained.
Yep.
He comes along and says, I wanna permit for, you know, a short term event, he comes along in his mobile vendors, we see these at the fireworks as well, those are. Those are, most of those are outfitted as mobile vendors.
Okay.
A temporary food vendor and a mobile vendor are slightly different in our codes, but they do the same thing.
Okay.
And go to the same events typically, so.
Is the health code?
It's the terms.
No, no, me interrupt your flow, you're doing great, but when you say our codes, are you talking about?
Our code, the food code, our food code.
State, state food code.
This, the state.
So we don't have our own local code, right, we just, or do we? For, for like.
For a mobile vendor?
Yeah, like for food code.
The reason why we're, we're, we're in the food truck ordinance.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Purpose here, so we're trying to figure out what regulations we have.
Ask the literal question, you're gonna get a literal answer, so here's literally the answer.
Okay.
The state, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Public Health has written um, state food code.
Okay.
And um, we all have to follow it, in addition to that though, the East Hampton Board of Health, several years ago. Voted to make that same wording a local code.
Okay, so we adopted the state code?
So the state food code, yes, we, well, we adopted it, and the reason for that is because then we can attach to it non-criminal disposition, cause now it's a local regulation.
Right.
And non-criminal disposition gives us the power to write tickets if there are violations.
And do, did the code change, did we make any changes or, or enhancements to the code?
No.
Or, or is it just the state code as worded, so we can enforce it?
Um, I do not believe Dennis in, made any enhancements to the food code, he did to the state code for housing, which he adopted also, and for camps, which he adopted also. But not, I don't recall anything extra for food.
And, and um, last question, cause I don't wanna keep you.
No, you can keep, I've got something special to do.
Cost, cost for, if I wanted to get a mobile vendor license, say for, I was getting a grilled cheese food truck.
Mm-hmm.
And what, what would the, if I wanted, say I wanted to do it for the summer, what, do we have?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars.
Per day or for the entire duration?
For the season, or for the year.
Oh, for year, oh, oh.
I think she, I think the lady that sells the kibbas up there, I think she's fifty dollars.
That's reasonable.
But that's, that's reasonable.
That's to the municipality for your, essentially, for your inspection and anything else that the municipality would have to do to enforce anything that went on there, answer any questions, investigate.
And is it the same for temporary food?
Temporary food is limited to four, a maximum of fourteen days.
Okay.
And a temporary food permit is twenty-five dollars, and it's typically one to two days long.
Right.
You know, like, the people that are gonna show up for the, some of the people, not all of them, showing up for the winter fest, you know, the chili cookoff. Some of them are gonna be permitted as temporary food vendors, some of them don't have to be, because they're already, they already have a catering license, it gets a little complicated.
Oh, right, 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 interesting, alright, I, I mean, do you guys have any other questions?
Not.
Okay.
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Why are you considering making a mobile food permit ordinance?
So, the, the, um, impetus for it was looking at the fact that, uh, now with the breweries in town, they're bringing, uh, they seem to be bringing in a lot more food trucks. And we wanted to encourage that, so we were, we were hoping that, you know, there was, we were gonna, we just wanted to look at the process and see if there was anything we could do to. Make it easier for food trucks um, to, to come in, um, you know, we weren't trying to hinder, or, you know, we, we, I think the, the ma- the real spirit of it was. What can we do to make this a, a smooth process, so if the Mission Cantina truck wants to come from Amherst every weekend, you know, they only have to get one permit, but it seems like they only do. You know, and.
Well, if, if the Mission Cantina, I don't know them particularly, but if anybody that had a mobile operation wanted to come for a day, uh, I would talk to them a little bit. Is this the only time you're gonna come, do you think you'll be coming back, we're gonna be doing this, that, and another event, you're gonna be coming to those also, this is for a vendor I've never talked to before?
Yep.
And depending on the question, the, the answer to that question, I might say to them, why don't you just get an annual permit?
Right, 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 right.
Um.
And that's only fifty dollars?
Yeah, I, I did that just recently, with somebody, I don't remember who the vendor was, maybe it was the, the grilled cheese people, as a matter of fact, it might have been them. I said, you know, instead of doing the two events, just get an annual permit, and I think that's what they.
Cause then they can come whenever, and so that was basically, you know, and then what we were talking about is, you know, since the kitchen needs to be attached, is there any zoning? Um, ordinance that we could do to encourage someone to open a commissary, if, if they couldn't find, you know, if they wanted to have a food truck. You know, specific one in one of the old mills or something, where they opened a commercial kitchen and had food, you know, bays for food trucks and, kinda similar to what they do in Boston.
Wow, I don't know what they do in Boston, that's interesting.
Yeah, I mean, we do have a lot of kitchens in East Hampton that aren't used, so.
Yeah, and I've sent these vendors, I say, check with this church, in fact, recently, I said, um, who was it? Can't remember who it was, but um, she came back to me, and she emailed me back and said, I've checked with this church, and they said no, another church, and they said they didn't have time, another church, and they said absolutely no strangers are allowed in this kitchen.
Right, 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 right.
Um, I've seen different communities handle this differently, I've seen them even use schools.
Uh-huh.
In the town of Ashfield.
Oh, wow.
Um, a local nonprofit organization was making lasagna and selling it in an annual fundraiser, and the lasagna was being made in, in all the individuals' homes. And when I came to town, I said, ah, and they said, well, we've been doing this for years, it's a major fundraiser, I said, ah. You know, that's, you know, you ought to be making something like lasagna, which is such a potentially hazardous food if it's not made in a clean environment, we can't control what's going on in your homes. You got kids, you got dogs, you got pets, you know, who knows, and, and it's not allowed, and it's also a liability. You get a bunch of people sick from lasagna you made in your home that you sold at the, at the fundraiser, you, you're gonna be in some significant liability. So that's what brought them around, that always does, and then we worked together with, okay, where can you make your lasagna, how about if you go to the school, it's a wonderful school. And a community willing to share it, and you all go with all your ingredients on a Friday night, and you have this big cookoff, you make your lasagna, you make your lasagna, you ma-. And then we, we got a person who was trained in food safety to oversee it, I didn't even have to be there.
Yep.
And then we're, they're covered for liability, they're doing it in a clean and permitted kitchen that I've inspected, I know is a good kitchen. We know the ingredients are coming from approved sources, real grocery stores, um, and places, so we were all good with it, and they continued with their fundraiser, so yeah. Communities can opt to do that, and in Greenfield, or somewhere up in Franklin County, I think it is Greenfield, they have a commercial kitchen.
Yes.
You know about this?
Yes, the pickles and the kombucha, and it's like this.
And um, I forget that woman's name that does the fudge and uh, the salsa.
They have all sorts of different people that are in there, like canning and.
Yeah, exactly, and it's a commercial kitchen, it's permitted, it's clean, it meets all the requirements, and it's fully stocked with all kinds of stuff.
And so that's the kind of thing you were like.
You pay to go in and use it for a specific period of time.
Right, like an entrepreneur, if you wanted to come to East Hampton and make a commercial kitchen like that, right now, the zoning doesn't, I mean, it would be allowed within the zone?
Yeah, I haven't seen where.
So we don't really, I don't think.
I don't want to generate any zoning wise, but to promote something, to get an entrepreneur to do it.
Right.
I think it makes, I think it's a little niche that might.
Yeah.
It is a great generator for small business, I've seen, some of the brands I bet you have in your kitchens right now have come out of that little kitchen.
Definitely, I know I have, right now, I know I have a couple things for sure that came from that Greenfield facility.
Where they manufacture that.
Well, one of them, I can't remember the name of the woman that started.
Yeah, they, they, like, I know, I got like um, a chili, um, like relish from there, um, I got a drink today, one of my student's dads is uh. Just started a beverage company up there, and he's using that facility, so it's like all his bottling and mixing and everything he's done up there.
And everybody, everybody wants to go into the food business, by the way, and that's the major drawback, is like, well, like I'm, I'm working with a woman now. Who wants to sell a particular product, and she has some wealthy backer, so whatever I've thrown at her for a requirement, she seems to not flinch. Uh, she's rare, most people, you know, they have an idea, they have a passion, they know how to do it, they think they can make a go of it. They've gotta put a fifty thousand dollar kitchen in to make a twelve dollar product, that's gonna take them twenty-five years to get a payback, you know, a buyback on it. So, most people won't do that.
But they don't need the whole kitchen, they just need it for a certain period of time, it can be shared.
That's right, and she was, the last place she went to was, I sent her to Myers Eatery, because uh, I think she went and talked to them about sharing some of their kitchen facilities on their off hours. I don't know if that worked out, and I think she was finally giving up and gonna work on her own kitchen space, but yeah, that would be wonderful.
That would be a really good fit for the mills too, to get something like that in there, so, alright, well, that's, that's really good to know, I mean, I, I think it kind of like. There's, it doesn't seem like there's a lot of stuff that we're gonna be able to do on mobile, on, on food truck, because it, you're, you, you kinda have it covered, and it seems like it's pretty, it's working.
Well, it is, and we try to make it easy, and I, and I am not myself a believer in saying, um, if a community is broke, let's raise all the permits. Let's look at the permit fees, let's see what they're doing next door at that community, and do it as high as they're doing it. For one thing, the law and the spirit of the law says, a fee for a permit is supposed to be tied realistically to the expense. A community goes through to issue that permit, like you said, inspecting it and the administrative, you know, paperwork and a few phone calls a year, so, um, and our fees are reasonable.
Yeah, I would say fifty dollars per year.
They could probably.
They could creep up a little.
Is it the board, the board does that?
Yeah, the Board, Board of Health sets rates, and I actually initiated a conversation with them about two years ago. Uh, about increasing rates, and we looked at all the rates, and we never finished that as a project, we got involved with tobacco regulations, and then one thing after another. And then we lost a board member, and it's been like that for almost a year now, and we just never got, it's still in the folder for the board to, to do some days, to review the rates.
Well, I would say, probably come summer, there's probably gonna be a pretty decent influx of food trucks, if, if what I hear is correct, so, if you, if we get that fee up, twenty-five dollars or something.
Where are you, where are you seeing the influx uh?
Um, well, I know, um, so I know the owners of the mills, and I know that there's, um, at Mill, Mill one eighty, I know there's a food truck that's gonna be based from there. So, and that's new.
Well, you say you know that, and I'm gonna challenge that a little, cause they're not gonna be based from there without talking, what do you mean?
Well, I mean, he's gonna, that's where he's gonna park, so, he has, he has permission.
Kind of on a permanent basis.
Yeah, he has permission from the owner, cause the owner owns that part of the, he has a, you know, uh, uh, he owns that part of the parking lot, basically, and.
Be sure to send them to me, because.
Oh, definitely.
That person and I should be talking now, so that he doesn't come to me three weeks before and then run into some obstacle that kills that whole plan for two months.
Yeah, I think he's, he's looking at.
So I really encourage people to talk to me as early as possible, so I can make it smooth for them.
Absolutely, he's looking at, you know, probably it's summer, um, at least from what I.
Summer is like a skip away.
I know it is, and um, so I, I also know that, that, well, at least if this, if this past falls as an indication, that, you know, every weekend, there was food trucks. Behind the mills, um, and at uh, Fort Hill Brewery, and I imagine that's probably gonna just increase.
So, this is a good time for me to lobby for something, and this is not really a lobby, but it's just planting a seed. Um, I've recognized for a couple of years that East Hampton is at this kinda tipping point, uh, we, we built this wonderful promenade. We're, we're recreating all of Pleasant Street, upgrading all of that, bringing more people to the city, we're having more festivals, which are getting bigger and bigger every year. Tomorrow, I'm gonna be meeting with the Cultural Chaos Committee as an example, to smooth out some of the rough spots from last year that I saw when I was there all day food inspecting. And you still have one thirty-four hour a week health agent for the whole city to do twelve major areas of compliance, so as the city grows. Food vend- yeah, but Jackie Duda and no food inspector's gonna work every day of the weekend, every weekend, inspecting food vendors, so at some point, it's gonna reach a point. Maybe while I'm still here, maybe not, you know, in the next few years, where the city's gonna have to increase the food inspection hours.
Yep, I, I would say, yeah, and uh, you know, that would, that's definitely something we can kind of catch the mayor's ear on for sure, and I, and I would also. You know, I think since the board sets the fees, looking at a modest increase here, would, and may, and maybe even saying, listen, it's seventy-five dollars for a year long permit. And when I come out to inspect you, it costs twenty-five dollars, so, you know, and so that's.
So it's an inspection fee, yes.
And so, and I, cause I think that's, that's reasonable, I mean, a lot of times, you know, when you get your car inspected, you have to pay inspection fee, um, and then you pay for it to be registered. You know, so it's, people are kinda used to that, and I, I think if it was, I mean, granted, now it's fifty dollars, but if it was like under a hundred, and you were able to come back multiple times and make. I mean, probably one, one trip here, they'd be able to make the hundred dollars easy, you know, um, I, I would say. Um, so anyway, just, and, and maybe if we, if there was, if, if we tackled it from both ends, um, the mayor might be more amenable to throwing more money to make it.
Yeah.
You know, um, cause I know that the budget's pretty tight.
And of course, all of these events happen when the weather's nice, not now, when I'm not so busy, and I take home early, you know, uh, you know, the camps, the pools. The, the, the big festivals, the people wanting to sell food, and, you know, that all happens in the summer in addition to all the usual stuff that's always going on, so. So it's uh, not that I can't handle yet, but it's gonna get to a point where, uh, we're gonna have an urgent need for another person.
Good point, as we grow, we're definitely gonna need more.
And it's always good to have two people in a community, um, trained to do this stuff.
Sure.
You know, so you can tag team, and so if I'm on vacation, somebody else can do it, or somebody else knows how to do it, that's familiar with the city, not somebody you pull in from another community to help when you're absent.
It'd be good to have a third Board of Health member too.
Oh, it would be, why don't you be on our board?
Maybe, I don't, I have a lot going on right now, but.
In fact, I have to check with, I have to check with the mayor, because we've been doing a little campaign to, to get interest in that.
Oh, really?
And we got replies, this last. And we got replies this last time around.
Oh, good.
Mm-hmm.
And um, I spoke to three potential Board of Health members and each of them were gonna send a letter.
Oh, good.
They didn't.
Oh.
Then I spoke to them all again and they said, oh, well, you know, holidays and all that.
Right, right, right.
I will, I will, and now I wanna check back with the mayor and see if she's gotten any letters.
Right, yeah, that, yeah, I I I wish I could, it would be fun, I'm interested in it.
It is interesting.
But um, I don't know, and there might be a conflict too, at being a city councillor, being on the Board of Health.
Well, there's definitely a conflict, that's why I want you on the board. It's like a good way in.
Yeah, right, I know.
I don't really know if there's a true conflict there, that's good thinking.
Yeah, I don't know. Well, I know that someone, there was um, I was just listening to the radio the other day and someone from Hatfield was a member of the school committee and the select board. I was like, well, that's interesting.
Well, that's not unusual, oh, in Middlefield, people are on the select board, the Board of Health, the planning board and something else.
Wow.
With the Conservation Commission, I mean, because, you know, in a city.
I guess you have only seven, twenty-five people.
When you're a child of three hundred and fifty-five people and that includes elderly people and children.
Right, 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 right.
I mean, you've got, many people have to fill multiple boards, so that's just a reality.
Well, we appreciate your time.
Yeah, I'm glad to ask, thank you very much, glad to be with you anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, appreciate that. So I think that that helps us a lot in kind of, you know, creating a direction for this, um. You know, I I don't necessarily see a need to create some sort of ordinance related to this. It would be interesting to, I'm, I'm going to look at what the mobile vending ord- cause I know that our mobile vendor ordinance. Like, would not be applicable to, it's like someone pushing a cart is our mobile vendor ordinance, that's what it's made for. Cause I remember I worked on it like seven or eight years ago, cause it was, there was a guy selling hot dogs in front of Brass Cat.
Right.
And so we worked on a mobile vendor ordinance, so I wonder, the Board of Health must have a, have a different set of, you know, definitions or something.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but hey, fifty bucks, if you wanna bring a food truck to East Hampton for a year, you cannot beat that and only have to get inspected once. I mean, that's easy, I mean, it's almost too easy.
Well, has there been any talk about other interests and other, other perspectives?
The.
From mobile, from, from, oftentimes you'll hear from.
None mobile vendors.
The taxpaying, the non-mobile vendor.
Right, 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 right.
Folks saying.
Well.
This is, this is, I mean, I, competition that is unfair, that they're not paying taxes, they're not paying taxes to the community, we are.
Right.
So that's a burden on us and then so we have this, this, we have a rent expense, we have the taxes, you know, we're paying your taxes.
Right.
We're still paying the permit fees that, and and here comes somebody on a truck and they're taking away our business.
But that's a good point, it's a taxes point, so like how do we, it's fifty bucks.
So how do you, how do you balance those interests? Is, 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 you want, you wanna make it open so that we get the best food available to the people that want it at the right time.
Right.
Uh.
Cause I would almost think that. That would. Seem like an accessory building if it was permanently housed there.
Right.
And that the. I don't know.
It's temporarily permanent.
Temporarily permanent, you're there and you're not paying taxes, are you paying rent to the, to the?
To the landlord, who then pays taxes.
Within pays taxes, well, then that's a different.
Right, it's a different scenario.
Different scenario, sometimes you're, like, like you're parked somewhere and you're not paying anybody's taxes.
Right.
You know, okay.
Right.
Um. Or, or is it enough of a niche that there isn't enough interest and everybody seems to have their own.
I think right now it's.
Piece and that's great and you want to keep business booming and people having those.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah, and and, you know, it's kinda hard, that, that, that razor's edge of uh regulation versus, um. You know, uh, cause I agree, I, I mean, if someone's coming into East Hampton and people are buying their food there and then they go back to Amherst and pay taxes in Amherst. And, you know, that, that is a little bit, you know, it's something I didn't think about. And so how do we, how do we find a way to recoup? Uh, that, that piece of it, or, or do we say, well, hey, if there's food trucks, more, it's gonna bring more people to East Hampton from out of town. You know, to visit our attractions and thus they'll spend more money in East Hampton.
And that's a great argument, I, you know.
Right, or, and so then there's all these, um, and or, you know, say, if, if we're Amy Florrick, who owns Amy's Place. And she wants to get a food truck. You know, and park it, have like a little satellite, Amy's Truck.
Sure. That's right, and that's why I was, I was thinking about and really trying to get this maker space for the kitchens.
I think that would be a really cool.
You have maker space for a variety of different businesses.
Mm-hmm.
I went on a tour to, to uh Somerville last, a few years ago and we looked at maker space in the Boston area and it was wild, they had like. Like uh, the, the best micros, uh, uh, electron microscopes in maker space.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they had, they had gotten them donated by one of the, you know, MIT or Harvard or something. In the maker space and so everybody had access to that and they had access to, to uh three D printers. All the kinds of equipment that you don't get in, you know, your average everyday space.
Right.
I can't afford to have a three D printer, but jeez, if, if, if we have one in this maker space, we can all share that.
Sure.
That's why the concept with the kitchen and my thought is if you can bring those food trucks to East Hampton, then we can get tax benefits.
Yeah. Yeah, cause if there's a kitchen, if they're based in East Hampton.
Right.
Then, then that's where the tax base grows and, and there's still so much space that is underutilized at the mills. And with that new big giant parking lot in the back, like that is ever-expanding.
Right.
It's still going, they're still building, I mean, it's paved, part of it's paved, but it's still going, it's gonna go all the way to behind East Works. And then that little road that goes up to, next to Riff's, you know, and up to that little street, it's gonna be huge. So I think that's maybe what we should take a look at, so I'm gonna look at a couple of things, I'm gonna look at the state, um, code. And, and see what the difference is between a mobile and temporary food, um. I agree, if, I mean, if this takes off, that we're gonna, I think the Board of Health is gonna have to raise their fees, cause I don't necessarily know. Um, that the mayor's gonna have extra money to put in for more health agent, I just, knowing budgets, I would say probably not.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, uh, but I really like this idea of the commercial kitchen ordinance or some sort of thing that we could do to make it easy. For that to happen, I don't, I don't know what that would be, or whether it's just, as a city council, we're outreach saying, hey, this is something that we think would be great in the city, you know, anybody interested? You know, um. Give a tax break for prorated over five years. That was something we did look at, um, do you remember, oh god, what was his name? Bruce, remember Bruce?
Bruce Gordon.
Bruce Gordon.
Yeah, I remember, I remember.
Yeah, from, yeah, he was the VA guy.
VA, yeah, VA administrator.
So one of the things we looked at under Bruce Gordon, god, this is a good, a long time ago now, so.
I remember.
Bending my, bending my memory, remember we looked at tax incentives, we were looking at. Prorated tax in- in- incentives for people that bought like old houses and were fixing them, like fixing them up, like a. Like a get the blight off of East, you know, so gives people that wanna fix things up a tax incentive, that would be interesting to look at. You know, a prorated tax incentive, incentive over like five years, so first year you save like, um, fifteen percent, second year you save. You know, thirteen, and then it goes down to, you know, full price, um, for people that. Uh. Rehab or do something that is a, a high priority. Need, you know, need or high priority project identified.
Mm-hmm.
In the city. That's too much for right now.
It's a great idea.
Yeah.
We could, we could pursue that.
Yeah, what the heck, I mean, it'd be, I mean, you can even do it for residential, like, you know, people that are, like, have old crummy houses and they wanna, as long as they don't flip them, as long as they're gonna stick. Right, there'd have to be some sort of incentive for them to.
Uh, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't necessarily knock flippers.
Uh, yeah, it's true.
I'd turn around and say, you're looking for the rehabilitation of the.
True.
Rehabilitation of the property, that's great, and maybe you pay a little, uh, a little, get, get a little lesson center or something.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but it would still, in the end result, there's people that better housing.
And it increases property values.
It looks better, yeah.
Right, I mean, I think it could be, it could be like a, um, that's a pretty progressive thought, I wonder if we, we, there's probably not too many communities doing that right now.
On their own, no.
Yeah, well, let's work on that, that's later, that's later, uh, alright, so, how about, so signs, how about this, how about what we do is for signs? We take that thing that I emailed you guys.
Yeah, which, by the way, I, I just got about thirty-five minutes.
Eighteen pages, eighteen pages of.
An hour and a half ago.
And then, so at our next meeting, we take a look at that, um, and you know what, we just go through the first five pages and.
When you say we're going through it, are you saying let's apply the comments that Jessica recommends?
I'm saying let's look at them.
Okay.
Let's, let's, let's get a hard copy of those, let's go page to page, comment to comment.
Okay.
And say, we think this is a good idea, or we think we could, you know, maybe there's something else we can do here. And just, it just goes, and then, you know, after a couple of meetings, we'll have gone through the whole thing and hopefully we'll have a, a pretty good idea of like, yeah, we really support all of these things. Or we really support a majority of them, or there, and there's just a couple that we don't.
Uh-huh.
Um, but I think that's probably, you know, once we've all read it and are relatively familiar with it.
Mm-hmm.
And then bring it to the table and say, you know, I looked at this one and this one is, just doesn't make sense, or I really, this page is all. Makes perfect sense or whatnot, um.
Because there is. It's confusing, I mean, it.
Yes.
The comments, so for example, this one, um, just one comment, let's see. You need, you need to place this more than just a subsection, needs to spell out the entire section reference, for instance, this section.
Right.
Or use one term or the other, not both, that's easy enough, but some of them are just, it really changes the entire document.
Yeah, yeah.
So for the sake of time, I just wanted to see how to best approach it because. Taking a shot at it on my own is like, I could go this way, I could go this way, I could go this way.
Right, right. And you know, I mean, I think when we were doing the LED sign thing, I found this sign ordinance that I was just. Was in love with, it was like the best sign ordinance I've ever seen, and I was like, there's no way. I'm gonna think about bringing this a whole nother process and so let's try to fix some inconsistencies and then maybe ten years from now. We can bring a new, like, cause I mean, the sign ordinance that, I, I think I shared it with you, it was really good.
It had pictures and everything.
Had pictures, it had diagrams, like everything was super clear, super concise.
Hmm.
Um, not so verbose as, you have to remember, I mean, uh JP, you remember the process, I think, right? Were you on that committee with me and Ron Schatzenoff? It was, so basically what we did, it was probably a series of fifteen or, or no, probably twenty or more meetings. Where we sat up at the big table upstairs with a whole, full table.
Yeah.
And went word by word. And it was like, there was battles between Ron and Clay, there was, I mean, there was like. Battles, epic battles, where they emailed each other like evil things and sent it to everybody, it was like.
It was a good, healthy discussion.
It was, it was, it was, so, you know, we ended up finding an, a, a, a moderate document that was kind of like a balance of a lot of the things. Which I, and I think a lot of it was ended up being okay, we just need to fix some things.
The idea, the idea of pictures in your sign ordinance makes a lot of sense.
Makes a lot of sense, it makes a lot of sense.
Really liked it.
Yeah, and me- measurements and so it's.
Who just clarifies things?
And, and it actually showed different styles of signs, so when you talk about different styles of signs, you actually can see what that looks like. If, when JP, when I find it, I'll, I'll email it to you, so you can take a look at it, cause it's, it's actually like, it's pretty interesting.
Mm-hmm.
You know, how, I, I think it was a model sign ordinance from somewhere in North Carolina. Um. Oh, my goodness.
You gotta be specific.
Yeah. Yeah, right, um, so, I, if, if that's, if that sounds okay with you guys, I think we're probably good and we can take a look at setting our next meeting.